I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For emergency issues only, is there any school committee members additions to the agenda? Hearing none, any public comment? Steve, you had something? No. Any public comment here or online? Hearing none, skip the next two things, and we have our consent items. Is there anything, anybody's looking to be removed?
Motion to approve the consent items.
Okay, that's okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Signed by Amy, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously. Unfinished business, our fiscal year 26 budget vote.
So, back on April 1st, we did our budget hearing, and there's two numbers you need to vote on. So, the first is on page seventeen. And this is with the new investment, the override. They're calling the investment in the town.
I'm calling it that, that's what it is.
One, seven, a one and a seven.
Okay.
Okay, so that number would be thirty-five million, four hundred and eighty, eight fifty-nine. I do want to just throw a twist at you. In the last, last week, we did get an update from GL at the town. So, we actually got sixty-three thousand dollars more because of local receipts and ambulance and new growth. So, in this number, there would be an additional sixty-three thousand, four hundred and ninety-four.
Can we change this number at this point?
That's the override number.
Okay, that's right.
One, six, three, six, two, three, six.
Yeah.
Has been voted on.
So, we can't change our ask of thirty-five, four eighty, eight fifty-nine?
No, really, it would come out from the one point six three six, two, three, six. I think we just need to know that there's an additional sixty-three thousand in there. Like, I don't want people to say, well, where's that sixty-three, four ninety-four, because we already gave the number of one point six three. Right? So, that number of thirty-five million doesn't change?
I mean, I think, like, once, if the override passes and we have that money, if we really don't have a need for it, it's money that we can return to the town, or, like Nicole kept saying, well, you lucked out with kids leaving, and if a kid comes, this could help cover that.
Right. We'd have some good luck.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, you're looking for a motion to add to the town meeting warrant with our new investment, thirty-five million, four hundred and eighty thousand, eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars.
Correct.
So, I motion that we send that number for the town meeting warrant, thirty-five, four eighty, eight fifty-nine.
Second.
Right, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, that number passes unanimously.
Okay, then if you go to page two-eight. So, this is without the new investment. So, you see how the town allocation says thirty-three million, eight hundred and forty-four, six twenty-three?
Yep.
That new number is really thirty-three million, nine oh eight, one, one, seven. Which is the increase of the sixty-three, four ninety-four. So, on this one, you would be voting the town allocation of thirty-three million, nine hundred and eight, one, one, seven.
Okay, and this number we can change?
Like, we're allowed?
Yes, like, we're allowed to change, okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion to have the town allocation number be thirty-three million, nine oh eight, one seventeen for fiscal year twenty-six.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I feel that this number terrifies me. I think that it's going to be awful for the district, and I think by voting yes for it, it's almost like I, I agree with it, and I don't. And that's something I'm struggling with, and I've struggled with throughout this whole process. So, I'll just throw that out there.
So, what happens if we don't vote for it?
I think it still gets voted at town meeting, right? So, like, if the override doesn't pass, and this is the number, and Steve, maybe you could correct me if I'm wrong, I know you didn't want to speak, but this number is still, is still the number that's allocated to the schools. The difference is when they start talking about it, and I stand up and I say, we voted a regularly scheduled school committee meeting. Instead of all in favor, it's whatever it was. Yes?
Yeah, that's accurate. We, by voting the town meeting after the election gives us the opportunity to present one budget to the town with or without the override. Okay, Steve, use the microphone, please.
Sorry, Steve, I get in an awful lot of trouble from Lou from that.
That's okay, is it on?
It is voted down by the school committee that we go back to last year's allocation, because if that's a chance, I just want to be clear to the board that we're losing an additional eight hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, I think that only kicks in if the town meeting disapproves it. I don't, I don't think your vote would, would impact that. But this is very new territory for all of us, I think. It's been thirty-two years since we've had an override question.
So, I really like how you said voting for it with duress, because that's how I feel. Like, I hate, I hate supporting this, because it seems like there's even an inkling that Heidi agrees with this. Well. But, like, it also has to happen.
Yeah.
So, anyone else have thoughts?
Well, I mean, I have a question just in that regard. So, if we were to vote no, the, the figure would still go forward, but if the override doesn't pass, can we renegotiate? I mean, can we say, you know, we don't approve of this budget, and we're looking for more?
I think time is not on our side.
So, I-
Kind of asking you, but.
I think at town meeting, right, if we stood up there and said, we voted no, or let's say it was two to three, or whatever it was, town meeting can still decide, well, yes, that's what you're going to get, and that's what you have. Or town meeting can decide no. Town meeting can't reallocate, right?
There is a process to reallocate at town meeting.
So, I guess the risk of that would be if everything failed the town meeting, like Brian said, we would just go back to last year's one.
Right, that is the rest.
And I do think there's some, you do have some ownership in this number, because I know, I don't know enough about it, so, don't quote me, that there have been school boards that have not approved the allocation, and they, they had to go back to the town or city and come up with a new number. I don't know enough about it, so I'm hoping we don't even get there, but I just-
I really hope this is a moot point.
You know what I mean?
It won't matter.
But I don't know enough about it, and I would defer to Steve on, you know, the warrant and stuff like that, so.
Yeah, this is a little, you know, beyond what my experience is, is allowing me to answer tonight.
Okay. I appreciate you answering for us, I know you didn't want to speak.
No, that's okay.
He loves it.
All right.
Call him back up.
Any other conversation, discussion, Mika?
So, I, I understand the logic of wait until after the election to have town meeting. In my sense, I would love to say that, that our residents would vote for, you know, an override. I would love to say that, but that's not what I'm sensing right now. And so, I think that we need to be prepared if, you know, for that not being the case. You know, it's disheartening, but at the same time, you know, people have their reasons, and we're definitely in uncertain times. And it's been thirty-two years since there's been, been an override. And we know that, you know, we, not that long ago, you know, really, really, really needed a new school. And so, people are just, you know, very tight with their budgets right now. So, I think that we need to take that into consideration. It's unfortunate, because we know what it means for the schools, but I think that unless there's a big push, that it might be, that might be definitely the case, and so I concede the concerns.
Anything else? So, with that, we're going to vote on the motion to put the number thirty-three, nine oh eight, one seventeen. All in favor say aye. Opposed? Me. And so, four and one. All right. Is that it for budget?
That is it, unless you have any other questions.
Nope. I think we get to town meeting and see. All right, Tadjo School Inventory.
So, in your packet, you have a inventory of Tadjo School. As you know, we are going to vacate, we've been vacating. I'm glad Steve is here, because we talked at Personnel and, no, Property and Transportation, that we reached out to companies, and they said it wasn't worth having an auction. You would not make what you need to make. So, we decided to open it up to other town departments, if they wanted anything in there. Open it up to the community on another day, if anybody wanted anything, and then we were just, have a company take it. We've been in contact with a company that takes all, they take care of it, they do whatever they want with it. So, I guess my question, Steve, do you think other town departments would want to take a peek in there, or?
Yeah, I appreciate the offer. I think, like, if you-
Do you have the list?
I don't have the list.
There you go. I really think somebody will want the broken ACs.
Yeah, give one to Whitney, too.
ACs.
What about the broken milk coolers?
I was going to say broken milk coolers.
The broken microwaves, the broken washing machines.
So, I'll, I'll circulate this. What's your timeframe?
We just discussed it tonight.
Okay.
I'll talk to Eric, we'll be in touch, but we figured if there's anything in there that maybe you guys needed and wanted, you know, there's some desks in there, I don't know if the rec department needs desks or something, I don't know. We're just, like I said, we're just offering it, and then-
We hate to throw away things that somebody else could use.
Yeah.
Sure.
There's some nice tools on there.
Yeah, the tools look pretty-
That are in good shape, too.
Most of them don't say broken, so that's promising.
So, just for your information, last year, we received a grant of two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars to do a feasibility study on the building. I just signed an agreement with Tianbond to conduct the first phase of that feasibility study. We're going to do an existing conditions analysis, which would include the roof, and then from there, we'll make further decisions on what, what we're going to do next. We have until the end of the calendar year to expend those funds, so we're, we're going to be working through that with our Buildings and Grounds Committee.
So, for what it's worth, we said in Property and Transportation, we wanted to get this done sooner rather than later. So, if we had to figure out how to close the building, like, Brian didn't spend time this summer working on this, so. I would love to have it empty for you by the last day of school.
Great, thank you.
Like, like she's going to be doing the work, Steve.
That's what you and I are going to do.
Yes, yes, exactly.
Oh, look, it's time for the superintendent's evaluation.
So, I told myself, I'm not coming here and reading this to you word by word, like, I always end up getting word for word. So, a little different this year, and certainly if you don't want to do it this way, I'm always open for feedback, but I'm really hoping. We forgot to do a mid-year. I will say, I forgot to do a mid-year.
We forgot to.
So, I wrote this as of current, right now, and the anticipated steps remain due. So, I could give you everything, so if we are moving forward in closing a building, I think a lot of us are going to be focused on that, and you'll have everything unless you want something different. So, I'm giving you everything now with some next steps. So, goal one is about the instructional programs. You know, this has continued to be a goal for us each year. You know, I do a lot of monitoring, ensuring, and evaluating the action steps, and then we all kind of work as a team to move forward. A couple of things that you've already heard about, because we've given you updates. I continue working with school principals and administrators about ELA and math assessments. As you know, we got a new ELA curriculum, we got new math, we're using new assessments. We're using that information to really focus on interventions and instructional strategies. I gave you an example in the Chestnut Hill February meeting agenda about how they're using it at each school. They report out to me when they do that, and we are now really looking at building tiers within regular education classrooms to provide the additional interventions that need to be provided within the classroom. That will be next step moving forward, and we'll use that for our pre-referral process in the MTSS that's required by the state. We continue with professional development, once again, on instructional priorities. Couple of years ago, we did the ELA, we're doing math, we do the I-ready. Our PD is focusing on that. A lot of K to five are making sure that we're in sequence, scope and sequence is correct and up to date. Six through eight is also doing some professional development and working with consultants on the ELA and math. I'm working with Sean in the Comprehensive Health and Physical Education. As you know, that's a new bring it out, and we're working with UMass, the Belchown move study. There's the surveys that I put as evidence. We have a K to twelve wellness team, and I just want to give a shout out to all these people. Sean Fortin, John Stogner, Chris Vino, Deb Peet are administrators, and then Casey Kibbe, Jen Sharon, and Liz Dextera, they are on this committee, and then Jim Bone, the PD, in ensuring that what we are learning and drafting the plan, and it be, it continues to be our top priority moving forward, and this also has correlation with the wellness policy that we have at Districtwide, which I looked at her and thought, wellness, so perfect timing, you know. Once again, this is, you know, the foundation for shaping our health and wellness, as we all know, is required, and need to be updated. Once again, just providing information, we have a learning network at DESI, at Lake House, a part of that, the Curriculum Guides, and also, in addition to UMass, in addition, the UMass team is also gathering community input as part of the recommendation process, so we're ensuring we hear student voices, families, and staff. So, once again, we always talk about, let's hear what the students want, we made sure that was a critical component. That was kind of a real quick, I don't know if you have any questions? The second one, this is the budget process. You know, I, I think we all know how we've been working on that, but I broke it down about collaboration with town officials, multiple meetings, we've all been there, we've been working together to see what we can do. You know, I'm continuing to advocate for what I think is a budget that aligns with the district's vision, mission, and action steps. I will continue to do so. Communicating that, you know, we have, in the Friday Focus, we send out communications about the budget. We present to the subcommittee, we present to the regular committee. In doing so, the administrative engagement, school and district administrators have always worked with me to develop their budgets. We work together each time we have new information, we continuously meet and give information on that. And community updates, presentation of the budget. As you know, you've seen the three budgets that were there as evidence, as we continue to do this. And this was one of the things, we'll keep communicating the channels and making sure that it's open and transparent with the vote on May nineteenth, seventeenth, seventeenth, nineteenth, and with the town meeting on May thirty-first. That's kind of where I left it, as whatever happens there, we will either continue to make those cuts and close cold springs, or we will continue about moving forward and establishing a plan of what we're going to do in the following year. So, that's kind of the budget aspect. Just stop me if you have questions. This is school district improvement goal number one. This is the whole, the multi-year strategic plan. So, we've been talking about the last six years, that we need to put our strategic plan to rest. We are working once again with, well, I'm working with Sean, the principals, and a consultant from the collaborative, Albert Musad Johnson. Some of you know him from last time. So, we've met, we worked with, I worked with Sean and Albert closely to come up with the timelines for every phase of the district strategic planning process. We're outlined what the key milestones and engagement strategies are going to be. We wanted to make sure, and I think this is one thing I took out of the first time I did it around, was the community input from both staffs in the community, I thought was vital in, in developing this. And, you know, I think Ruby, you remember, you were on it, you know, it was even nice to bring the people back after COVID, and they were still invested, and they were working to say, okay, let's see how we revise this and move forward. We want to continue to build a collective ownership of this and transparency. We want to, we did a survey for students and staff, you know, stakeholders. It was great that we had a number of parents that wanted to be on it, and individuals as well. But one of the things that I wanted to make sure was that the, all administrators were involved in this process, because it's great to have two administrators involved in the planning committee that we meet every other month, but the principals are really the ones that need to carry out and live by this document, and so I always encourage them, this is our plan moving forward, so you have to be part of that. So, I worked with Sean and Albert to make sure we have meetings with the entire leadership team first, then we go into the planning committee, so they can't say, well, I didn't know that, or I didn't want that, because they're going to have to own this. I just put in some more information about Dr. Albert Musad, if you wanted to know, I know a lot of you know him. We had two meetings so far, Thursday, March thirteenth, and April tenth. We have another meeting scheduled for May seventh and May fourteenth. We will have a draft plan for you to approve for next year. By June, you should have that new plan moving forward. And we're just going to continue to move forward, so come June, we can bring this plan to you and have the transparency, the collaboration, and meaningful input from all stakeholders. I think it's been a very lively discussion with the individuals that have been in the room with us, so I think that's a great thing. And the last one is the one that I wish I, we could move faster on, but it seems like this is slow, and I just have to realize that, because we're trying to change culture and climate. So, this is the one about belonging and embracing different backgrounds and celebrating different heritage. So, this, I've made it very apparent to administrators that I'm looking for them to celebrate and organize school-based activities and district-wide activities to celebrate diverse identities within the building. Some of them, that I always talk to them about, is student voice. We've had the dream team for some time now, and we were lacking the student voice. So, some of the things that they've been doing slowly and surely, as I gave you some examples, those have all been listed in the Friday Focus before. It's, you know, celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month, reading stories, displays in the hall, No Place for Hate, morning memos, advisories, all have a purpose about focusing on celebrating diversities. As I said about the dream team, they really had to redefine and revitalize what their dream teams look in each school, and it looks different in each schools, but I'm coming to, around saying, that's okay. There's different age grade, grade levels. What I'm happy to report is that students are really sharing their experiences, discussing concerns, and being part of the planning of these celebrations or artwork that's going on in the school. So, I appreciate that. And just for an example, like, under the leadership of the dream team, which consists of both students and staff, they're developing the school-wide activities based on ADL lessons, but they get to choose which ones they want to do. You know, they really give the feedback. Sorry. At the lower grades, they were doing Words That Hurt, Help, and Heal. That was a great activity. Once again, No Place for Hate, we've been doing it at Javish. Javish has been recognized as a state. Now Chestnut Hill is doing that as well. We also want to expand out to community partners and really talk about this. So, two things I want to talk about quickly was my involvement with the district attorney's office. I was asked to sit on the board for the Safer Schools Summit with the DA's office and the Child Advocacy Center here in town. So, I was involved in that from the beginning, worked with the team to bring in guest speakers. It was titled Be The Difference, Belonging Is The Support We Need. I had the opportunity to sit on a panel that day, answering questions to talk about what's happening in Belchertown. We talked about the candle with care, which was a simple thing of supporting students. And then I also had the opportunity to talk about our work with the, I'm going to lose it now, the Justice Department, when we had the individuals come in, when we had the incident at Javish. So, I received two emails afterwards asking for more information about it. People thought, it seemed like a good opportunity to bring this. It's a fray, they come in, they train the students, they train community members. We had some, Ron Aponte, I believe it was, Lisa, or select board members, they did it the first time around. We brought it up to the high school, Chris does that at the high school now. It's just another vehicle for hearing student voices. The other one, I just kind of supported it. Magda did a lot of the work, but she got the Secretary of Education in here, and she knew how important it was to really celebrate our diverse learners and heritage. So, she reached out to other building principals, and we took a select number of grade levels, brought them up to the high school. Javish did No Place for Hate, Chestnut Hill read a story, the band played from the high school, the chorus from Swift River play, sang some songs. It was really, 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 really a great opportunity and a nice event, so that was great, reaching out to the community. I think it put Belchertown on the map for a day or two, so that's always good. And then, in the strategic planning, it always- And then, in the strategic planning, it always comes up about belonging. We had this big conversation at our last time. I don't know that we're gonna have a specific strategic goal about it, because I thought about something that Lamika said to me last time, is we need to start getting things in place for systems. And instead of, you know, having a separate one, we're gonna embed this in all the work we do. Like, I know that the English Department just came forward to CNI. They talked about revamping their books. They used our Instructional Guide, which talks about diverse learners and authors and stuff like that. So we're starting to build that in the system, so if I leave tomorrow, or someone comes in, we have those already set in stone to make sure that we're, it's just not a one thing by itself. So that stood out with me, so thank you for that feedback. Mika, and I think we have to do more work on it, but I think, we talk about it all the time in our leaderships. I think it's becoming more routine for people, which I appreciate, but I know there's probably a lot more we could be doing. We even had a conversation about changing our little posting on job, applicant, job postings, you know, the encourage women, minorities, and, you know, vets, whatever it may be, to say, okay, we wanna embrace diversity here, and we welcome all, so.
That's all. Quick follow-up question. So I know at some point, it's hard to keep track of time, but we had some students come in to kind of provide some feedback. I feel like we had some, maybe students that were on the Dream Team at the high school, and then a younger cohort of students. I was just wondering sort of if there was any follow-up. I feel like we heard some feedback that maybe things weren't with the older group.
I think last year we heard from one high school group that, and when we heard from them, there had been like some contention within them that day too. But then this year, that group came in.
The Spirit Council, but it sounded like they had kind of shifted their focus to be a little different.
Yes.
Anyway, I just wanted to kind of keep it at top of mind.
Yeah, yeah, no, and I appreciate that.
Following up with the students as to what their experience is.
Yeah, and I can see if I can get some more students to come in to provide an update too, but yeah, there was kind of like a, I don't wanna say a recall, but kind of like a.
It was sort of a refocus.
Yes, a refocus.
When the Spirit Council came in, right?
Yes, the Spirit Council, and a lot of the individuals that were here last year had graduated.
Right.
So Chris was trying to work with people, the younger students that had been on it, to bring some new students and really focus on the report that we got from the Justice Department and how we can start identifying those items that were listed as top five, and kinda take it that way. And that was the group that Chris had said, you know, wanted to come talk to us, and they came and spoke, but, no, I think that's good. I think, I, I know what you're saying, and I think we should.
Okay, thank you.
So I have a question that I don't wanna know the answer to. But any of the, like, federal mandates that are coming out about canceling DEI stuff, has anything been affected in Belcher Town, at least if you get?
We have not had anything that's been affected.
We got warnings from the, for the drug-free communities, because that grant is, comes directly from the DPH CDC. And so as it was all happening, we, I got like notes that says, like, the cease and desist, and but it's, we don't target particular populations, we, drug-free communities is drug-free communities. I mean, we target young people.
So because we do other things, is that drug-free in risk?
We're, we were told we could not spend federal grant money on those activities.
Okay.
So, which we, we weren't. We were spending it on drug-free communities.
And I think too, that a lot of people are going to the feeling of belonging. We did lose, I'm just throwing this out, it's kind of a side note, we did lose federal funds for getting local beef in town. So we can't buy local beef anymore from Austin's Farm or wherever we got it, so we have to get commodity beef. That's the only thing that I heard. I have not heard about, you know, there's all this talk, we got a letter that we're supposed to sign something, and we were all encouraged by superintendents, don't sign anything. It's going through the Attorney Generals and.
I saw something like that, the commissioner gave.
Yeah, so we're just holding on to that.
So I guess I'm gonna ask if something changes. Will you tell us?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Like, even if it's bad news.
Yeah, 'cause I know like Springfield lost 40 million in grades.
Right, but to be clear, that was Esser funds.
Was that Esser? I don't know.
Yeah, it was something weird. It had to do with COVID money.
Yeah, okay.
So whatever the, because I think there was some confusion, so the, I think that they canceled any remaining Esser funds.
Oh, they did, okay.
Yes, that's my understanding. So any money that districts lost, it was any remaining Esser funds.
Gotcha.
I have a question about the goal on, on belonging. What are the existing data points that let us know that our efforts have been effective? Because I don't, I'm not considering the budget. I'm not a fan of creating a survey. So are there any data points out there of information that we already collect that would let us know that, you know, the work that, that we've been doing in this area is, is effective?
Yeah, so we do have the Vocal Survey from the MCAS, and that has said that, and I can share it with you too, that majority of students feel that is, there is a trusted adult in the building that they can go to in doing that. A lot of it is kind of like assessing of how students are responding when they get sent to the office. And, yeah, it's that street data that we talked about, right? I'm trying to think what else. Did we talk about the, did Smithy have anything on there?
Yeah, but no, no, even vocal, my memory of vocal and the PNAS and those where they have those kind of questions are not disaggregated by race, ethnicity, for our school.
Right.
Only for like region, because those groups are too small, so it's like, this population of students throughout the state feels this way, and then we can just sort of assume we're, but then there's no way. But most of what we're getting is through conversations, because you had asked every school
Yeah.
to have student groups that they meet with, and so we're getting like actual feedback from students.
And it's not data per se, but I can tell you like, I don't, I can't tell you how many emails I've received about the Acceptance Club at Chestnut Hill and how powerful it was, and don't get rid of that. Were you, did you send me any? No.
Yes, I did.
Yeah, yeah, you did, so, about just the benefits of it, and, you know, please continue this, and students feel safe to be here, you know? So I, I sometimes struggle with this, Ruby, I mean, Lamika, because, yeah, we can get you data, but the best data too, is that street data, when you get the responses back from the students. But I hear you. We might have to look at that more, just to say.
Well, I don't know if you can get any data beyond the street data, because the numbers are so low.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, any other questions, comments, feedback? So, in the drive is the end-of-year evaluation form, and there's one here in your folder. If I could please get these back by May 2nd, that's gonna give you a few weeks' pass vacation, so if you're going away, you still have a week. Natalie, I know last time it gave you a hard time sending it to me electronically. If, can you fill it out like by paper? And you can even get that to Heather, and Heather could get it to me.
Absolutely.
Okay, that way we'll, we'll just have it and, we'll know it. So May 2nd, if you could just remember that. All right.
And certainly if anything drastic changes from now to the end of the year, I'll report and let you know that, you know.
All right, Curriculum and Instruction?
We do not need to meet on Thursday.
Okay. Am I on that one?
Yes, you are.
Okay. Personnel and Policy hasn't met yet. Property and Transportation met tonight. I guess I'll say, we talked about budget and what's gonna have to happen if a building closes, because it doesn't pass. And Ruby and I both give our blessing that Brian's just gonna need to do this. We're not gonna be able to offer him a whole lot in terms of support, and he can't run things by us to get it happen, because it's gonna be so quick. So if somebody feels differently, by all means, speak up, but I, I think that that's the point we're in, and I know a lot of people are gonna be very unhappy with that. They wanna, well, I think you should do this or that, and there's just not gonna be a lot of time for that.
And I, I will just add, if it's okay, that we did talk about like trying to put out messaging ahead of time, so people are aware that this is a potential. Just so people aren't, aren't surprised if it comes to fruition.
And emailing it to all of our current parents and ones scheduled to come in, and getting it in the Sentinel for people who aren't in the district or in the school. Okay, Finance and Budget, that's later on in the month. Healthy and Safer Schools?
We did not meet at the last meeting.
Collaborative?
We did meet.
Yay!
So, the discussion was around, of course, finances, and that's a lot of the discussion for a lot of educational institutions right now. As you know, the Collaborative, they made cuts in January. They said there should not be any further cuts unless there's funding that, that they used to get that they'll no longer have. They're, they're working on communicating better with staff, especially considering these times. I'm sure that, you know, pretty much all educational institutions are doing the same, because the, the times are just unpredictable. They are considering, or not considering, but along with communicating with staff, the Collaborative is also gonna be reaching out to school districts. I think they, they're aware that the Collaborative does need to be a redesign. And so as a, to work on that redesign, they'll be reaching, I don't know if they reach out to you, Brian, yet, but they'll be reaching out to superintendents and kind of getting a feel for what the needs are, what the Collaborative might be able to provide based on, on those needs, so they'll be reassessing needs. And it's just, you know, these are some uncertain times, and so they're just trying to work through it, just like everyone is.
Perfect, thanks. All right, with that, is there any questions from the media? All right, nothing online. Executive session is on here, but we didn't have negotiations, because we went to a select board meeting. So unless somebody has a pressing need to talk about negotiations, I'm gonna say we're gonna wait that part. All right, with that, then I will make a motion, we adjourn at 6:43.
We don't talk about that?
Where? Oh.
No.
Oh, it's on the agenda.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, and there was all this kinds of stuff in the drive, so.
On that?
Am I in the wrong one? Sorry, never mind. Just ignore me.
Okay.
Maybe I was in the wrong one.
I was like, I don't know what you're talking about. Okay, so with that, I'm making a motion, we adjourn at 6:43?
Second?
All in favor, say aye. Aye, so we're out. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, that was April 10?
They were not always efficient. The thing is, I haven't eaten dinner, so.
Are you in 23, 24?
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah.